Right on time. This way Deb likes it. Didn't hit with shot caller this time, sorry. Okay, we're going to start you. Ready?
Yes.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you today for coming this afternoon. It's my honor to be here to moderate today's event. My name is Brian Brown, the Government Affairs Chair for the Northeast Johnson County Chamber of Commerce. And I'd like to thank you for your time today. Our official timekeeper is Deb Saddle, CEO and President of the Northeast Johnson County Chamber. And if we move forward, let me share some information. So, we have some questions that were prepared beforehand. Questions were not shared with candidates. They're there. Questions were shared, not shared with the candidates, so we'll be presenting this information. The purpose of this is to make sure that as we ask these questions that are of interest to the community, specifically the business community, they can share their position on these items. This event is being videotaped. It will be uploaded to a website, joko.com. And we'll make sure you get a copy of that link. We anticipate the, once the media is uploaded, you should feel free to access it from that activity or you can whatsoever be able to share that out as well. So, today, I'd like to start off by introducing our candidates for Fairway City Council. Starting off, I'll report to the other candidate, Dan Bailey. Ms. Emily Snyder did state she would be here, although we're going to progress forward without her. For Ward Three, we have Mr. Jim Hackner. Also, Mr. Bill Stafford. Then we have Keel Corcoran.
Corcoran.
Corcoran. Thank you, sir.
Of course.
And then we also have Miss Tony Keith. So, at this time, the way the format will work is that we will have the candidates start off with a two-minute opening, telling you why they have chosen or elected to run for public office. We will then go into a five-question question-and-answer session. Where the candidates will be given a question. They'll each be given a minute and a half to respond. They'll respond in rotating order. So, if candidate A answers question A first, candidate B will answer question Two first the next month. They will continue to alternate. Then we'll give the candidates two minutes at the conclusion of this event to wrap things up, share their thoughts, any map, share why they're the candidate in choice, and why you should be voting for them. So, at this time, we're going to go ahead and get started with the opening remarks from each candidate. We're going to start Ward Two with Mr. Dan Bailey.
Hello, thanks for coming. I'm Dan Bailey, for those of you who don't know me. My wife Wendy and I have been residents of Fairway for about fifteen years now. One of my daughters, Lynn, is in the background. The other daughter, she might show up in a minute. They both go to Westwood View. I'm an engineer by training. My wife Wendy also is an engineer, and she currently heads the planning commission for the city as well. This would be my third term, and I think in those first two terms, we've really made a lot of progress in terms of what I would call infrastructure issues within the city. And I think we're right there on the precipice of, you know, solving some of those. So, that's why I'm running for a third term right now.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Hackner, opening statements to you, sir.
Good afternoon, Dan, and thank you to the Northeastern Johnson County Chamber of Commerce for hosting this forum. My name is Jim Hackner. I've been proud to call Fairway home for the past twenty-nine years. My wife Jane and I moved here from Kansas City, both her neighborhood, because we believed in this community, its values, its schools, and its future. We raised our two children, Elizabeth and Eric, right here. Professionally, I spent over thirty years as a clinical social worker in healthcare, working with patients facing kidney failure, helping them navigate dialysis, transplant decisions, and the emotional toll of chronic illness. I also held leadership roles at both the local and national levels, including legislative advocacy. Before that, I worked in mental health across inpatient and community services, and even with the Kansas City Missouri Police Department on a research program exploring how better mental health coordination could help in crisis response and prevention. For over forty years, I also managed a small apartment house in Kansas City, providing affordable housing while overseeing the three haven upkeep. Two experiences have deeply shaped my desire to serve, leading a parish revitalization effort that connected people across faiths and needs, and supporting trauma counseling efforts after the Northern Illinois University Campus shooting. Both moments that reinforce my belief in community, compassion, and service. Now that I'm retired, I want to give back. I believe Fairway is a special place while more neighbors still look out for each other. If elected, I'll work to preserve that small-town feel while helping Fairway move forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hackner, appreciate that. We will now give the opening comments, and Mr. Bill Stafford, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Bill Stafford. Past sixteen years, I've called Fairway my home. As a professional engineer and a businessman, I've built my career and my life on honesty, integrity, and practical problem-solving. And, excuse me, values that strengthen the community. My engineering background makes me uniquely qualified to collaborate with Fairway's Public Works and Parks Department, while my experience managing engineering firms has prepared me to carefully analyze budget and monitor the city's financials. Since retiring in 2020, I've dedicated my time to serving others on the Fairway Board of Zoning Appeals, through outreach at the United Methodist Church of Resurrection, as a volunteer at Shawnee and the admission. And most importantly, as a husband, father, grandfather to my two local children and seven grandchildren. My experience understanding Fairway's government, combined with my experience in business, development, and civil engineering, requires me to be a collaborative and effective voice for our city. I'm committed to protecting public safety, safeguarding Fairway's financial health, and making wise investments in our infrastructure, public spaces, and natural beauty. I believe in shaping our future by showing up, attending county city council meetings, listening to residents, and working together. Fairway is unique, close-knit community. I look forward to continuing my service in keeping Fairway economically strong, safe, and beautiful.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stafford, much appreciated. You two are both really funny, this sounds retarded, I know, but my head, I'm going to be looking forward in the future to find jobs. We'll now move to Ward Four. Your opening statements to Mr. Keel Corcoran, please.
Oh, hey, everybody. So, it's actually pronounced Kyle Corcoran.
Kyle?
Yeah, it's different. I think my mom told me it was German or Irish. She, she switches. So, some days it's German, and then Irish. It's funny. So, a little bit about me. So, I've been here about six years. My wife has lived here almost all her life, and we just got a little boy. Two years, it's actually his birthday tomorrow, so we're having a little birthday celebration at the park. So, kind of a little bit of education, like I'm creding on PhD at UMKC, so in math and statistics. And I have a bachelor's in math from K-State, and then a master's status in UMKC. So, why shouldn't I qualify for Fairway? The big thing I'm going to take away is I think the stuff I learned from these degrees, namely, so the critical thinking skills, you know, the modeling stuff, because my, at the very time, my model infectious disease could be applied to the same type of work in the city government. So, you could model maybe public works, you could model tree, you could model bay and snake kind of stuff, which is all applicable, I think, on your math class for a reason, right? And also, through the past couple of months, since July, being a couple, I, campaign members have been talking to people in Fairway, right, about their concerns, about the future of the city. And, like, I want to make sure those concerns are brought to the attention of city councils, right? I think I'm best to do, because I talk to them one-on-one, and then, right, they need a candidate who will do that for them. I think I could be the person to do that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Corcoran, much appreciated. Well, now, the final opening statements from Ward Four, and Miss Tony Keith, please.
Thanks. Hi, everybody. I'm Tonya Keith. I live at fifty-nine oh-nine Delmar, so I live close to Fairway Creamery. Love it. I've been in Fairway for about twenty years. Local elections matter, local government matters. That's why I'm running. That's why I really enjoyed being on council for about three terms so far. I really enjoy being a voice and helping navigate neighbors or anyone in Ward Four that has questions. Love being their voice and just helping them find answers to any, any problem that they want to help navigate. I, part of my favorite pieces, I really enjoy how we've grown over the past decade in parks and recreation. I'm so proud of our public works and police department. We have wonderful directors in the city who we rely on as council members. And I've really enjoyed helping shape policy and be alongside our residents in Ward Four to help shape what we can have as the best city. So, that's why I'm running again.
Thank you very much, Miss Keith. That concludes the opening statements. We'll go ahead and get started with the first question. Mr. Stafford, the question will be directed to you. It's very important, uh, excuse me. With a lot of areas, community areas, struggling to communicate consistent, accurate data, what is your strategy to ensure a high level of community engagement with stakeholders, both residential and commercial, while working collaboratively with your elected colleagues? Mr. Stafford?
Could you repeat the question again?
Certainly.
Maybe just a tad louder.
Sure. What is your strategy to engage stakeholders, both residential and commercial, moving forward while working collaboratively with your other elected officials?
That's a really good question. I hadn't given it any thought. But one of the ways we communicate is we communicate through our newsletter, which is from my canvassing of over a hundred homes during the beginning of my campaign, my signs out, is a very effective tool. Many people that don't, that they see my write-up as well as the other folks. As far as the second half of it, with the city council, you need to encourage people to come to the city council meeting, which they don't do. I don't really have a method of doing that, other than just communicating to them what we're doing, which the city is already doing a pretty good job with it. But I do, I do feel like it is my job to be at the city council meetings, to make sure that I understand what's going on, as well as the budget for meetings that are at the end of the month. And I would ask residents their input, and so how they feel the city could better engage them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stafford. Did a very good job answering the question. Mr. Hackner, same question to you. What is your strategy to ensure a high level of communication or community engagement with stakeholders, whether residential or private?
As retired clinical social worker, my National Professional Council that I was a member of in the National Legislative Chair, I would have a list of everybody on that, that was throughout the whole country, communicate via that information. I think also, my recent canvassing, knocking on doors, getting to meet people face-to-face is kind of just my, my take on things. I would like to have many people in quarterly meetings. People could come to me, or either here in my home, something like that, to share. And always the door would be open. And I just view my voice as the voice of the community sort of more, and but I would encourage the community, not only just to come into the council, but also getting more involved as a community and all that. So, that would be my, my background.
Very good. Thank you very much, sir. Miss Keith, the question is now to you in alternative fashion. Is your, very much your strategy to stay engaged with your community members?
I think there might be some different approaches for neighbors and residents compared to commercial. So, I'll talk about commercial first. I think it's really important to have networks, and over time, you can gain those networks. The complexion or the makeup of Fairway in the sense of commercial, I think a lot of that goes through the city, through our city administrator, maybe through our mayor. Certainly, I think when we all have the opportunity to make a connection or help someone who's interested in commercial navigate, I would want to make sure that the city administrator is aware and make sure that's happening, right, because it's pretty concentrated in Fairway. So, definitely, I would help navigate that and make sure that information is shared. For our residents, we've had quarterly or about three times a year, award meetings, walking around, talking to folks. I really enjoy taking advantage of, in addition to just walking around, like last week, we have awesome city events, like Touch a Truck, and all of these different things that we do. So, I really want to take advantage of naturally occurring pieces, including committee meetings and council meetings, and just continue to make sure that folks know we're accessible and we're here, and we want to be a voice alongside them.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Mr. Corcoran, question to you, sir.
Thank you. So, I think the first approach, I would agree that it'd be slightly different beyond the resident and homeowners or renters, the like. For me, you would start with community meetings, right? Get people together, you start getting them to list what they should do. So, I feel like if they don't have, like, an opinion that whatever bottom is going to be considered by city government, why are they going to engage with council if they're just going to be like, you know, talking about other people when they're not talking about what I need? So, it has to be door-to-door, get their opinion, get them in a space that's comfortable enough. And then, once they feel like they're going to be heard and understood, and then they'll come along. Also, I think for businesses, you shouldn't incentivize them, Fairway. Maybe a little bit of maybe a tax rebate or something, or a tax rate. Same thing, I think, also for the residents, too. You help them, they're not going to want to be able to incentivize them. Because I think the bottom line, a lot of people feel like they want to dissipate, but what's the point? Is they're not heard. And I want to make sure that, that's always, always the first, for businesses and residents.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stafford, much appreciated. Mr. Bailey, we'll wrap up with you, sir.
Okay, I'll take a little bit different approach. I think we've already solved this. I would challenge you to find a city that is more responsive to the residents or their business owners than Fairway is. There probably are some that are on the same level, but, I mean, truly, if a resident reaches out, they're either talking to our city administrator or department head, usually within an hour, that same day, the next morning, to resolve their issue. So, you know, somebody mentioned earlier attendance at city council meetings. To a large degree, we don't have a lot of attendance, because the citizens are largely happy with what's going on within the city. Are there issues that need to be resolved? Are absolutely always, you know, it's dynamic, but I think the city does as good a job as it can to navigate those issues. The constant contact that the city sends out keeps everybody abreast of what's going on. And citizen engagement surveys, from my understanding, we have a very high percentage on those surveys, which is unique to our community.
Very good, thank you very much, sir. So, Mr. Corcoran, we'll start with you. I believe somebody mentioned it in their opening statements with regards to the progress that it had made in managing infrastructure within the city of Fairway. Mr. Corcoran, what I'd like to ask you is, obviously, managing infrastructure is very challenging, very costly, especially with significant engine overhaul. What is your position on what you believe the future state of Fairway looks like with regards to the current state of infrastructure?
Let's have a dig. The city has done a very good job. Current, I think what is lacking is sidewalks, and through that, so I talk to people, rely. They say, they would like to see more sidewalks, just to worry about, you know, walking the dogs, especially at the night and sixties, if the car's going very fast, you know, especially during the night, there's nowhere to go. You know, far as street lights, especially like the end of Del Monte or Del Mar or La Vista, there's not a lot of light down here, right? So, if you're driving at, say, evening, and then, you know, cars come out at midnight, you're not going to see them very well. So, I think that needs to be highlighted a little more. I mean, that's, I don't know, the city does a job, which needs to be better around streetlights and sidewalks.
Thank you very much, sir. Miss Keith, question to you. What is your position regarding the future state of the infrastructure in Fairway?
I have a lot of gratitude for the city's planning and the collaboration and all the data that is gathered on how we're doing with the different things. There are, for example, you know, overlay, all, all the parts and pieces that we have as part of our budget process that starts in April. I feel like we have a very thoughtful group. When we have to balance decisions or information about priorities, sometimes things come up. I appreciate that our city and our council are able to commit, if we need to, to understand a priority might change. Always pleased with the streets. Also, I really appreciate that our council and our city administrator and council, or department heads, really help us dive into an issue, for example, how do we build capacity for streetlights? How can we get a professional consultant to help us make those decisions? So, I feel that we're in really good shape, and if there's something that we want to explore, we do explore it, whether or not we have resources and when we'd be able to do that in the planning board of the budget.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Now, my question to the engineer here. One of the, two of the remaining three. Mr. Bailey, at this point, I've obviously made remarks on the progress of this city's infrastructure within the city of Fairway, and what are you seeking for is to stay the things that's still being addressed and being addressed.
Yeah, what I, what I think has to be kept in mind is, we're talking about public and private infrastructure, and largely to the citizen or the business, there's not a differentiation between the two. They, they both need to work, and they both need to work correctly. What is shared between public and private is, pretty much all that infrastructure was installed when the city was founded, you know, seventy-five-plus years ago. So, A, there's different standards, B, there's age associated with infrastructure, and it just wears out. So, we look at individual components, the city looks at individual components under their purview, and, you know, makes plans for those. I, I agree with Kyle there. We're looking at streetlights right now. Those streetlights were installed back then, and they're not in the optimal spots. So, is there a way to, when we're milling and overlaying, when we're already disturbing the street, to improve on that infrastructure? I think yes. We've addressed the stormwater side of things. We need to continue to address flooding issues along the creek, and working with partner cities, cities around us, working with the state or the national government in terms of grants. And we need to keep pushing the private utilities, Evergreen Waterborne, Kansas Gas, to continue to improve their infrastructure, which I think they do a very good job of.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Hackner, any questions to you, sir?
Longest thing lines would be flooding. I just recently, I think there's some heavy rains since a couple of months back by the Mission Creek Bridge and stuff, and I think they can look at that, trying to get that cleaned up so that it flows and doesn't flood that area. That's one concern. Another concern is the recent issues with kids on their electric scooters and stuff. And again, not having maybe a little marking to the side of the curb, so there's that, I don't know if we can provide sidewalks or not, but at least have some designated service space so that the kids and all that, and adults walking their dogs can feel a little more safer along the curbs and stuff. And then, talking about lighting, we just came back recently from Breckenridge, and they have what's called a dark sky certification, which is a special type of lighting that allows for more sky and the birds and things like that. And I think maybe moving forward would be, maybe first, since we're a small community, to have that certification, and be a ground, ground swell for the whole county to move in that direction. I'll also get some notification for that.
Awesome. Very good. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate that you made a reference. My, Mr. Stafford, question to you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Final engineer.
Sorry.
Is that the last engineer on the panel? That's the last engineer.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to compliment the city, they're doing a good job. As I mentioned about the statement, I am a civil engineer. I have a master's degree in tree technical engineering, and I'm probably the only one who has actually worked as an engineer for the city's Public Works Department. My background, over fifty years, is in infrastructure, water management, roads. I designed roads. One of the projects that I actually designed was a pavement and for the Kansas Speedway. I was responsible for all of the, overseeing all the earthquake of the Speedway. So, bringing me aboard, bring fifty years of experience in the Public Works Department, who already knows me, to continue to evaluate and make sure we're making the right decisions at Public Works. And no way does that criticize what is being done right now. But everything in nature changes every day, needs to be looked at every day, and that needs to be taken care of.
Thank you so much. We're now going to move over back to Ward Two, and Mr. Bailey, the question's going to be to you. So, looking forward, we kind of talked about infrastructure. You've all shared kind of what your future strategy is going to be. Looking forward, if you're likely to over your next term, then what would you see between the key things that you would be addressing in the city of Fairway?
I think probably the biggest item right now is the future of the police department. And by that, I mean, I think we have great chief and a great staff, but the location of the actual office, it's next door, it's completely outgrown. And last I heard, there's literally a wall falling in on itself. In our, I'll probably keep saying this, in our one square mile of Fairway, we don't have, we're built out. We don't have empty real estate. So, the location of that, and then the price tag associated with land acquisition and building, the new building, it's going to be a big number. So, to answer the question, I think that's the most important thing in front of Fairway at the moment.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Stafford, question to you first. What do you feel, if elected, moving forward during your term, would be critical areas that you feel would need to be addressed?
Well, I agree with Dan. Public safety is, is the number-one issue when I survey the folks. So, taking care of our police department, making sure to upgrade building or renovate it, whatever is necessary, and that's an area that I would really fit very well into. I spent fifty years in the commercial development field as an engineer. I know many of the folks that have developed in this area. I'm married with First Washington, which owns our, the Fairway Shops. So, there's something that could be done with that, from my experience, you know, working up twenty-five years on the East Coast. So, that's really the number-one, the number-one item that I, that, you know, if you're looking at any particular item. And then, after that, you know, you've got, you know, the mentioned, the Fairway Shops to look at, which brings up, there's flood plain, that we, I'll show you, it's a major parkway that can be turned into a dog, dog park. A lot of people love to run, run their dogs in a dog park, so that would be something that would, you know, with my background and experience, that I could surely add to.
Thank you very much. Mr. Corcoran, some questions to you, sir.
I kind of agree with both the sentiments here also. I think as far as the police concerned, I think we have the new senior housing that's been developed. A lot of people are moving in there, taking a look at their safety in that, and if there could be the possibility, if the police department does need to move, maybe there's some location close by there within the Fairway Office Department that could be utilized for that, to give them more space, and also provide more security for a lot more residents at that point. I think the flooding issue around Mission, the Mission Bridge is a concern. And also, as far as the economic development, there's a few shops in the Fairway Shopping Center. See how those can come back to life, to again, provide the community spirit, the community, where people can come together and all that. So, just seeing how they can kind of utilize those spaces that are given back to use.
Very good. Thank you very much, Miss Stafford. Moving next, we'll hear from Miss Keith. Question to you is, moving forward in four years, I know that you, you see it's strategic priorities for the city, that you feel would be addressed?
Yeah, I definitely have alignment with prioritizing discovering a solution for our police department. I think along with that, making sure that we have the strength and expertise to manage and balance all the demands in our capital, making sure that we can stay on track with that, while also balancing discovering a solution for the police department.
Thank you very much. Mr. Corcoran, some questions to you, moving to strategic priorities for the city.
So, I, to me, it's about three of them. So, the first one is the wealth inequality. You see it in Fairway, right? You have people put lots of money, and they afford these big houses, like people who are struggling to rent, and they get priced out. That needs to be addressed and efficiently, right? Just also, another day, I've gotten priced out because the rent has been raised too much, and they can't afford it right across the street from me. So, also, the second one is all these tear downs have been about across Fairway, right? So, if we keep letting that happen, it's kind of like you're going to have the same problem when we're going to get priced out in the next four years. And they're not going to have families or young professionals coming in and trying to, certainly, they just can't, they just can't, they can't afford it. If Fairway's supposed to be a place where people can get a starting home, and then, you know, stay a little bit, get some equity, have a kid or two, and then move to a bigger house, if it's all just going to be, you know, like a terminal mansion, it's not accessible for people, right? And the last one is just kind of like, so I have been in this department, I talked to the chief about two weeks ago, right? Didn't own a jet, so water damage and stuff, and the walls have a little, some mold and stuff, right? I agree that we need a solution to that for right now, but you've got to remember that Fairway, they get about two million dollars out of the twenty-six budget, right? So, I think if we can address the wealth inequality and these tear downs, we can help them out and help everybody.
Thank you very much, Mr. Corcoran. So, this far, we've talked about infrastructure, talked about priorities. A lot of these things are what I would consider aspirational things, that we would like to have, to add value to the city, but they all become a pressure. to add value to the city, but they all become a pressure. So, Mr. Hattler, I'll start with you. Understanding that we have this thing called a three-legged stool, and here we'll generate tax, income tax, consumption tax, property tax. Income tax is off the table, so we either have a consumption tax or a property tax. Outside of those two mechanisms, what do you see as being the easiest to be able to pay for some of these things, moving forward, to be able to add, continue to add value and quality to the city fairway?
I think that's a hard question. I mean, I see right now with the change in the housing structures that that does raise the taxes and the income that comes from that. I mean, maybe some activities or trainings. I know what the concern with the bikes and the kids on the bikes, maybe there could be a little training course, certification process that doesn't charge much, but at the same time, provides a good community service for the kids and for families to be comfortable that their kids will be safe when they're riding their bikes and stuff like that. Some sort of activities. I know the Shanti and the Mission has been an area of concern that maybe more indigenous nations could come in and do more things there that would generate more attraction for people to come and learn about history and that, as well as also maybe be able to sell some of their goods and get some recreation back from things that are quickly back. Those are about the only things that I can think of, except to see, make sure that the shops are something that they're being totally fully used and added, they're providing source of income.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stafford. Appreciate that. Mr. Stafford, what same question to you, sir. Obviously, you know that there's a lot of these things.
Could you just pick just a little, a lot of things?
I'm sorry, can you hear me? Can you?
Fairly.
Fairly?
That's much better, right there.
I feel like I'm yelling, but I'll go ahead and talk really loud. So, I've never been asked if I was on a call before, so this is the first.
It allows me to concentrate better on answering your questions.
Not a problem, sir. So, once again, question to you. So, we talked about a lot of these things that are going to add value to the city. It's going to keep people here, it's going to attract people coming here. In your mind, how do we find some of these things, knowing that you only have a handful of mechanisms that are in place with regards to either consumption tax or property tax? What do you see as being other ways to be able to find some of these things that need to occur? And I'll give you an example, say, there's an infrastructural collapse. You know, obviously, infrastructure is very top of the project. Those can tap reserves very quickly. How does this go about finding those?
Well, that's a very good question and one that I'm, I'm not exactly sure how to answer it because we have a city right now that really looks at their budget very carefully and maintain their bill levy the same for ten years, which is not the same than many of our cities. So, if you can. So, that would be the number one thing, first of all, to keep level, okay? Now, if we have an infrastructure problem, you've got to go back to that budget and you've got to move the money around to take care of it. And, you know, I'm not an accountant, I'm an engineer, but you work with your accounting folks in town. Do you need a loan? The last thing you want to do is to go after a bond referendum with people that live here. Because as we pointed out, you know, we've got folks that struggle. So, the way that I would fund, look at, analyze the budget, talk to your accountants, see if there's a way to fund it, if there's another way. But truly, the last would be to raise a bill levy.
Thank you very much, sir. Good next, back to the vote. This time, let me try to make sure, question will go to Mr. Hattler.
Everybody, I can start. I can start.
Yeah.
So, a couple ideas in regards to that. So, I think so, this twenty-two sixty budget is out there. Now, we can go through and see if those things have to waste or if we think the money's being used efficiently, right? And maybe we can take sides and that is a reserve. I know the city has a reserve on it now, but like, well, I want to like, look at the utilization of these budgets and go, do we really need to spend X amount of money? I'll give you an example. So, so I was looking at the budget last night. The place was spending about sixty-seven hundred bucks on office supplies. So, like, is that really efficient? You said it's only about ten people. So, like, just like that, do we can, maybe we can, we use some of that allocate reserve fund. I agree, we shouldn't raise the, the buildup of tax, right? But maybe we can ask the residents for, if they want to be part of an assistance program, some type of emergency, you know, infrastructure or, or daily needs. Like, we just, we want to ask the people for help if they have all that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hattler. Obviously, same question to you.
Yeah, thank you. I think some folks have mentioned the different tools we might have within the budget. We do have a healthy reserve. What I appreciate is that in our administration and finance committee, we're constantly reminding ourselves of where we're at with budget. Can we handle an emergency? As has been mentioned, do you have a reserve? Certainly, that's limited and may not cover everything, but it helps us plan and be ready for that. You know, certainly, we might have an opportunity to increase sales tax. That's maybe not going to, you know, help us cover a huge catastrophic piece that we might be doing, but I appreciate all the planning we do and that our budget's been able to remain flat. And ultimately, we would use the tools available to us if we needed to hear from residents how they prioritize or what they, is it worth it to pursue something so that we can have enough funds to make an improvement or to discover a resource, for example, for a police department? So, I appreciate all the mechanisms we have in place that give us the option for tools.
Thank you very much. Mr. Riley, let me know that question, sir.
To, I think, to a large extent of the mayor's credit, we run a zero-based budget. As an engineer, we sit through these budget meetings and I'm just shaking my head, but I know it's a, I know it's the right thing to do. We are spending money like the residents are asking us to spend money. I think we're very efficient in the way that we spend money. And you mentioned, you know, some of the things we're talking about are wants. We budget and look at those, and I think we, you use the reference of a three-legged stool. Borrowing some giant economic collapse, we have money to buy more legs to a stool and fund these projects if we look at them strategically years ahead of time, which I think we do.
Very good. And that's appreciated. So, kind of the basis of this question, I appreciate you all responding. It's kind of to share with the community kind of what your vision, being innovative. And I appreciate your thoughts outside the box, Mr. Hattler. It's like, how do you create your own, you know, kind of work with this box? And the last thing you wanted to do is tell me, you want to raise product prices. And I think across the board, you know, all of you pretty much, you're like, that's how to be the last resort. Let's try to figure out things else for sale. I appreciate you all responding to that question. Now, I'm going to switch gears a little bit before we get to closing. Kind of just look at capacity and competencies. And so, at this point in time, this piece, we're going to start with you. What do you believe is the most important skill or competency that you run forward that distinguishes you from most from your candidate that makes you the best choice for this work?
I hope that over time, I've been able to demonstrate competency and understanding the complexities of project management, budget and finance. I'm a social worker, but I work for state government and am familiar with budgeting process for the state government. I know you need to get input on that. I understand how to be alongside stakeholders. And probably my, my greatest skill, others might say, would be listening and being able to help navigate really difficult subjects so that they can be relatable and understandable, even if you don't agree with a decision the city has made or the city council has made, to be able to explain how and why that decision was made.
Thank you very much. And this comprehensive question, certainly feels things you, it's when you came here, you know?
Uh, I think I can throw a couple of ways. So, first of all, I think due to the professional background, absolutely, math, if I could, modeling, statistical reasoning, right? I think those skills are really applicable to the areas you see in like city governments. Critical thinking skills, forecasting, predicting different budgets, forecasting expenses, stuff like that. And also, like, I think more importantly, like, someone who's elected to the city council should be very passionate and empathetic, right? Here's one thing, you listen to someone you hear with and say, but if you have, you try to see it from their perspective, right? I try to live my life as that, right? That I may not know you, but you're just as important as I am, not less, but not less. And I think, I could say, if I can, I could break that to, to the city council or fairway, right? At the end of the day, the candidate's confidence should be about ability to help or his power to help the people that they represent. Because that's what this is about, is a doctor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hattler. Appreciate that. So, Mr. Riley, any questions to you, as you are an incumbent? The way you feel, or the, if you share your background, what way you feel that if you choose to be a individual, it's kind of a senior challenge?
I'll be the first to admit, I'm a master of none. But I, but I do like to think that I can look at situations and not form an opinion before, you know, before we start. Hear everyone's opinion, value those opinions, and help get to a spot that, you know, brings the most good to the situation. There's nothing, no decision almost, where you're going to get a hundred percent consensus on. So, you know, taking that, I'm pretty unemotional when it comes to things. I don't get offended. Taking that and then with the technical skills, the engineering skills, which I can talk about, you know, I just think I can help solve, you know, the issues that are ahead of us for the next four years.
That's awesome. Thank you. So, basically, what you told me, you know, your five lines jokes are into.
No, you can ask my daughter, she'll laugh a lot about that thing.
Mr. Strack, question to you, sir. What do you feel distinguishes you most and makes you the candidate of choice in your race, sir?
Well, the first thing, by fifty years of business experience, it's taught, it's taught me that you have to first work as a team and you have to listen. Then you have to analyze everybody's thoughts. And they have to be willing to, you know, make it in a business from blue sky things and see what's going up to make, you know, to decide what works and what doesn't work. So, that's a general answer. But specifically, I bring tremendous civil engineering skills to the city. I've got fifty years of experience. I do peer reviews for people all over this country and things. Secondly, I've managed businesses. I've had as many as sixteen-hundred people working for me, over fifty offices. I've analyzed budgets. I've learned how to determine what's important, what's not important, how do you manage money, how you not manage money, you know, how you hire people, how you motivate people. All those things I've done all of my career. I bring a tremendous amount of skills to, that can be used by the city in a variety of ways.
Thank you very much, Mr. Strack. Very much appreciate it. Mr. Hattler.
Being on the social service side of everything, I think my skills are more kind of bringing people together and getting information from them, gathering the data and getting, you know, I don't have all the skills or all the knowledge. And so, I think my skill has been to get feedback from people, understanding what's important for them and what else can be done to think out of the box and problem solving, looking at problems and maybe a priori, different perspective way. The little bit of business skills I have, just running an apartment house and also starting when I was younger, when my father moved here, started the business. I helped him with that as long as, along with his part-time job, full-time job that he had. So, I think I understand both, being able to bring people together to work good as a team. When I was in healthcare, it was good communication, it was understanding kind of the needs that the staff had, but also what was going on with the level of quality of care that's provided to patients and stuff. So, that's, that's my format. I would like to see the neighbors be, I'm just the voice for the neighbors and stuff. And so, I think there's a lot of concerns, maybe a lot of other viewpoints that they would have that they would contribute. So, I would be one that could bring that to the table rather than just, you know, like, I'm the one that's the only charge and stuff.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. So, obviously, you're all referring to recently here about the city, and I think that's awesome. I think we should applaud it for that. And number two, consistently I've heard is you are representing a constituency. Everybody consistently mentioned listening is made very important skill. So, once again, being able to engage and understand the individuals that you're representing is really important and it's good to hear that all of you are willing to be able to do that. So, I think that's great. So, we're going to wrap up with the Q and A portion, and we're going to shortly close here. We're going to allow the candidates to give a brief closing statement. We're going to start on the very end with Ward Four and how that has funded Keys. Keys, would you please go ahead and give us your closing statement at this time?
Sure. Thank you. I really appreciate everyone being here. I started at the beginning and I want to say it again, the local government matters, local elections matter, and the fact that you guys are here and listening and might be able to share with others what you experienced today is really important. I really enjoyed being in fairway. I think fairway is innovative and I appreciate all the expertise that we have with our department directors. I look forward to continuing to be the voice and filter and champion for Ward Four and be alongside all of our neighbors to make sure that our thoughts are represented and understood as part of a larger process for the city.
Thank you very much, Mr. Keys. And now, here are the closing statements to Mr. Hattler.
Oh, thanks, sir. I want to say, I want to thank moderator, appreciate you for doing all this and the depth of hosting, and then everybody for showing everybody on the livestream too for listening to this. So, I just want to, I want to close with it. Take away from this, just city, local government matters for the reason it's your government, right? You can make a difference, like something just occasionally. And so, that's my, right? I want to run based on the idea here that I can bring what I hear and we can fix some of these issues, especially the ones about the big mansion, right? I don't want fairway to be a complicated community without physical get. And that's what's going to keep happening if we just keep going in the same direction. You know, with the city council, do what it does right now, with the land commission, approve all these, these advantages, right? Leave it to someone about that. Because I don't want to see anybody get forced out of the moving truck that I know because they can't pay the rent or they're kicked out of their house because the landlord wants to sell it to an investor so that they can build a quick profit. And, you know, now if a girl's home, like, she's home, it's not, we can change that. And that's what I want to take away from this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hattler. And now, here are the closing statements. Mr. Will, it's time for this.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the time and the opportunity to be here. Fairway is a community that I deeply value. Throughout my career, I've solved problems with honesty and integrity and remain committed to serving our city with the same dedication. As a professional engineer, a member of the board of zoning appeals and active volunteer, I'm ready to continue working on fairway future. Together, we can ensure fairway is safe, financially strong, and a place where families like yours and mine can strive for generations. I'm honored to earn your trust and your vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stafford. And now, the closing remarks, Mr. Jim Hattler.
Thank you again to the Northeastern Jackson Johnson County Chamber for tonight's forum and to those that are here. I'm running to serve, not just as the voice for my neighbors in fairway, but as a collaborator with surrounding communities. Fairway is a gateway to the greater Kansas City area and I believe can lead by example by staying connected, inclusive, forward-thinking. If elected, I'll approach issues with a wide perspective and a steady commitment to the values that make fairway such a wonderful place to live. I'm asking for your support and more importantly, your partnership as we work together to shape the future of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hattler. Among the anchor light, we have this coming deal. And we have the closing remarks of Mr. Jim Hattler. Go ahead, my head, open the door for you, we have a good city hall. So, thank you very much, Mr. Hattler.
It's been mentioned before, local government is important. Local government's as important as any other, you know, level of government. That being said, my wife and I were two busy professionals. We have two small children. We're busy as well. This is what I can do right now to give back. I probably should not say this on the record, but this is likely my highest political aspiration. Maybe I'll run for water one more someday, but no promises. I've been asked, and I haven't addressed it, so I feel like I can, feel like I can address it now. My opponent, Emily, I don't know. She was not at the other debate that we had. She did not respond to the city's questions and she's not here tonight. That being said, I'm sure she's a great person. So, I'd encourage you to actually reach out to her and talk to her about these issues. And truly, if you decide she's a better fit for the next four years, you will not offend me whatsoever. So, just like everyone I think here said, thank you all for the ones who did show up. Thank you for putting this on. I really appreciate it. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rayleigh. So, with that, that's going to conclude our event today. Uh, this time, our candidates are busy, but they are moving forward with community leadership. Let's give them a round of applause, please.